Good morning, everybody. June Margolin from Huntington Matters. This is our first interview in our series for Election 2025. I'm here today with Dana Richter, who is our Vice President behind the camera, and Diane Schaber, our producer, who's checking the audio right now. And of course, our first guest, very special guest, is Ms. Jennifer Hebert. You prefer Jen, right?
I go by Jen, but I'll answer to anything.
So she'll be Jennifer on the ballot, right?
No, Jen Hebert on the ballot. Even I had it changed so that it would be familiar to people.
Oh, nice. That's a great idea. Okay. So Jen Hebert is a candidate for Town Council in the election November 4. And let's just dive right in. So Jen, tell us about yourself and why you decided to step forward to serve our community as Town Council.
Town Council. No worries. First of all, thank you for having me here and for this opportunity. You guys get a great audience, and this is a wonderful way to get out, you know, in front of people that maybe don't know me or haven't heard of me yet, although I hope you've all heard of me because I've been working really hard as a candidate for Huntington Town Council. A little bit about myself. I have lived in the Huntington area for 30 years. I moved here with my husband before we had our children because we wanted to find a really wonderful community where we could raise our kids. And the Huntington township and the Huntington community has been the perfect place for us for a few reasons. First of all, we were looking for a really charming New England-style town. And I've said this before. My husband is from Maine. When we moved to Long Island, we literally set out to look for a town that reminded us of New England. And so Huntington was it. He's also an avid fisherman. We were looking to live by the water. So if you see a man out in an orange kayak fly fishing, that would be my husband. And I know some of you know who I'm talking about because people have approached me. They're like, "That's your husband?" So yes. But also, most importantly, maybe, was that we were looking for a diverse neighborhood to raise our kids. And it was really important to us that the kids have people who celebrate different holidays and speak different languages and look different and have different families. And so Huntington was a great answer for us because it hit on all the marks. For the 30 years that I've lived in the Huntington community, I have been actively involved in trying to better our community in the ways that I could do that. So my three boys, our three boys, graduated from Huntington High School. And while they were in the school district, I worked at every PTA position. Excuse me. But then I also ran for and won a seat onto the Huntington School Board. So I was a trustee of the Board of Education for Huntington for nine years.
Yeah, a long time.
A long time. The first time I ran was when they had just closed the school up at Jack Abrams. And it was a really divisive time in our community and a tricky time to run. But I knew I could get up there and help, so I did. And luckily, I won the spot at that point. When I ran the next two times, I ran uncontested, which was, you know, a real honor to me to know that the community in the Huntington School District supported me enough that nobody felt like they wanted to run against me. They were confident that I was doing a good job. I finished in 2020 on the school board. And then I recently got onto the Huntington Library Board. So I'm a trustee of the Huntington Library, which is a really exciting time to be on that particular board because of the work and the renovations that are going on at the Huntington Station Library Branch, which thrills me. I am so grateful for the...
You're gonna have the off-camera give us the detail.
I will give you the detail off-camera.
Because we wanna be there.
And you should be there because it's going to be a tremendous asset to that community who really deserve it.
Maybe they give us an exclusive when it's time for it.
Oh, gosh, I would love that. And actually, and I'll set you up with all the trustees because quite frankly, I'm the newest trustee. And I'm sure that there are a couple of trustees that could give you even better information than I would be able to. But we would love to have you come over there and highlight that because that branch of the Huntington Public Library is obviously, you know, it was being rented for a long time. They finally have the right to do some renovations. The bathrooms are being redone, the outside facade. And obviously, anybody who lives around that area knows that they're also putting in the new sewers lines there.
Yes.
So that's all working.
And they're getting a playground? Am I lying? Did they get the playground in the DRI? Did they win that? I think they won that. No, they didn't get it?
I don't think so. I was gonna say, unfortunately, I don't think so. Anyway, we are very, very anxious to see the renovations that go over there and really happy that they're happening. Professionally, I am an educator. And I've worked as a public school teacher. And I've worked as a nursery school teacher. And for the last 12 years, I've actually been the director of St. John's Nursery School, which is right in the village, right, located in beautiful St. John's Episcopal Church, right by the library. So as you can tell, I've been part of this community in a very active way. And it's important to me. Service is important to me. I don't have any investment in the town board in terms of business. I don't own any properties in the town except for my home. I really just want to get there to represent people and to be the voice for people who feel like maybe they don't have a voice at that table. I'm very good at working across the table from people that disagree with me. I have a lot of practice at it on a school board. And I really feel that I will bring balance to the board. I like the town board members currently. I think they're really nice people. And I would look forward to working with anybody who's there. But I do feel like, right now, what I hear, no matter where I am in the township and no matter who I'm talking to on what side of the aisle, people would like to see the town head in a new direction. They're not necessarily comfortable with all the decisions that are being made by the town board right now. And I think that they recognize me as a person who has integrity, who has experience at working across the table and who works... I lead with diplomacy. So I don't wanna be controversial. I don't, I'm not looking to be contentious. I'm looking to work together and pull in the same direction, even if we disagree. Let's find the part that we agree on and then let's move. Let's pull in the same direction. And so I really do think that that's what I bring to the table. And I'm really hopeful that I'll have the opportunity because I think that I would be a great voice at that table for our community.
Yeah, that's awesome. So just to shy down, they did approve new space and playing areas of Huntington Public Library.
Oh, they did? Okay.
I thought so. That's in the downtown rebuttal.
I knew that out back, they were talking about being able to put that area. I didn't realize it was designated as a playground.
Instruction of outdoor spaces for the library station for children and outdoor secure children's area.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And you know something that's really important? Because the one thing that our library system is missing, and we're not gonna turn this into a discussion only about the libraries. But I will say that we lack an outdoor space. And that really limits the kinds of programs that the Huntington Library can do. You know, if you go over to Cold Spring Harbor or to the Harborfields Library, they have these beautiful outdoor spaces that really allow them to do some really nice programs. And so that'll be a great addition. Thank you.
Does the town own that parking lot behind? This is our, we have to not do this now. We're not taking our time up for this. Okay, so what have you accomplished in your elected position or work experience that you are the most proud of that directly benefits our community?
Okay, I'm gonna tell you two things. So there is almost nothing I'm more proud of than getting the Jack Abrams School reopened as the STEM Magnet School. And it was huge. And you know, we're obviously living in a time where our communities are really divided. We're divided locally. We're divided statewide. We're divided nationally. It was true of Huntington School District at the time that I came on the board, too. You were about evenly divided between people who really didn't want that building closed and people who really didn't want that building open. I came on at that time, and we found a way. And this is the way I work, just so you know. I'm not looking to make these big decisions behind closed doors and then tell people what we've decided. I am a person who likes to get input from the community. I think it's important that stakeholders have that opportunity so that when decisions are made, they have the buy-in. Even if they disagree with the decision, they realize that at least they had an opportunity to express what their opinions were and what they were looking for. And we did that in Huntington School District. We didn't, I didn't win the election and throw the doors open. It took us another year or so to get the school open because we investigated the best possible solution that would get as many people comfortable with our decision as possible. And so reopening the Jack Abrams School was a huge accomplishment for our school board. It obviously wasn't just me. There was a whole team of people that, you know, deserved the credit for that. But it's something I'm very proud of. The other thing I'm very proud of is the years and years of wonderful nursery school experience that I've provided to families in this community. And if some of you are out there, maybe you can tell everybody what a great school it's been. But I get to see the families that I've affected all the time as I walk around. And I know when it's my nursery school family because instead of hearing Jen or, you know, Mrs. Hebert, what I hear is, "Ms. Chen, Ms. Chen." And then I know. And within that, and I'm so proud of that job and I'm so grateful for that job because I love working with the kids and my staff and those families. But a great thing about that job is that I did manage to keep that school alive and open through the pandemic. We closed, obviously, for the time that we were, you know, obligated to close. But we reopened. I think we reopened way before Town Hall reopened.
Yeah.
And we're a nursery school and a church. So I'm really proud of that. I know how to make tough decisions and I know how to work through tough situations.
That's a good example.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You're appreciated.
So this is a new question, though, but an awesome one. Thank you, Megan. What do you have to say to disengaged voters who think their vote doesn't matter? How will you inspire them to get to the polls?
Okay, so here's the deal, Megan. Thank you for that question because I've been answering that question at the doors for seven months. A lot of doors I knock on when I go to the door, they are disenfranchised voters who feel that local politics and local elections don't really affect their life at all. But instead, what I try to explain to them is that it affects your life in a large way and hopefully in a good way on a daily basis. Because everything that's going on outside in our town basically is affected by the leadership you have at the town council. So if you want your parks clean and the garbage is emptied and the bathroom's working, well, then your local election should matter to you. If you are unhappy with the way development has been happening in our township or you wanna say in that or you're concerned about our green spaces because you really don't want any more of our, you know, green spots to be developed or you love our beaches but you hate when you go down and you can't swim because the water is contaminated. All of those things are things that the town council will have an effect on in your local election effects. And then finally, if you're finding life to be moving in a direction of being unaffordable, if you're looking for ways that maybe the town can help you through these challenging economic times, then your local elections matter to you because those decisions, the way your tax money gets used and spent are all affected by this local election. And the final thing I would tell you is, if you're looking for inspiration about why to show up at the polls, reach out to me and I will give you that inspiration because I don't mind speaking one-on-one to a person and explaining to them who I am and how much their vote means to me and how honored I would be to get it. So, you know, like I said, I don't think people should hesitate. The reason you run for a local election is because you are actually accountable to the people right in front of you. That's what I love about a local election. It's what I loved about the Board of Education. The people I was serving, my constituents, they were in the grocery store when I was there. And they're at the restaurants and they're on the soccer fields. And so you're answerable to them. And your town council should definitely be answerable to you. So if you need to know why it's important, reach out.
Love that. That's great. All right, if you could guarantee to get exactly what you want right away, it's the magic wand question.
I love it. I know exactly.
What is something you would fix or improve in the town of Huntington? And what is something that you never wanna make changes to?
The Conti Center would be built and Huntington Station families would be using it. Period.
Yeah.
Full stop.
Yeah.
That's exactly the one thing I would do. I can answer it right away. If I had another magic wand, I would absolutely start to make changes to how we protect our drinking water because I have real concerns about our aquifers.
Yeah.
But I'd start with that Conti Center.
So off-camera, we'll talk about the Crab Meadow Restoration. Are you involved? Are you involved with that?
No, but I'd love to be because I actually have met some of the people that are working on that and would love to be involved. I think you and I know I'm a gardener and a... Yeah, so, yeah. I can fill you all in on that later if we have a little extra time.
All right, so town congestion and parking. Huntington Village has become a huge cultural and economic hub.
Yay! Yay, Huntington!
With people coming in from all over the region. But limited parking and traffic congestion are the result. What is your plan to improve parking and traffic flow, not just in Huntington Village but in other overcrowded hamlets like Cold Spring Harbor and Northport, while still supporting our local businesses?
Okay, so I am one of our local businesses. I run a nursery school over on Prospect Street, right by the library, right in Huntington Village. So I'm gonna start being Huntington Village-centric and then I'll explain the rest. When I give tours of my nursery school, and you could ask anybody this that's come through my nursery school, and I've said this before, so bear with me if you've heard this. I tell people, "I can tell you 100 great things about my school and one really bad thing." You wanna guess what the one really bad thing is? It's the parking. The parking is a problem. I know people like to claim that it's not a problem, that it's like, "Just drive around a while, you can find a spot." If you're a young mom trying to get your three-year-old to school and you're carrying another child in a car seat, then driving around and looking for a spot is not really viable. It shouldn't be like that. And I'll, so I was frustrated several years ago.
You're so calm usually. I love you like, "Ooh."
Like, "Ooh, I'm gonna be diplomatic, I promise, Mom." I was frustrated a few years ago when they replaced that parking lot behind Panera. It inconvenienced the local businesses. It went on for a really long time and it added, from what I understand, an additional six spots or something like that. Like a number of spots that I could count on two hands. That's not a good use of tax money, okay? So I never would have made that decision. I never would have voted for that. If we were gonna redo that parking lot, they should have at least found a way to add more than just a small number of spots or find a different spot for, you know, an additional parking lot, which I have an idea about. The other thing I would say, though, is that I never also would have added meters that are impossible to use, that nobody can see when the sun is on them, that now you need an app for because frankly, I think that's disrespectful to a large part of our community that maybe is not handy with their phones and with apps. And what the community was looking for was not more expensive parking. What we were looking for was additional parking. So yes, I get frustrated when I talk about this subject because this has been going on for years. We need to bite the bullet. We need to put a parking garage. And I know a lot of you are not gonna be happy. But what I think we can do is, if we engineer it, right, we're gonna go half a story under. We're gonna go half a story up and maybe look at the roof as a way to put some solar panels on and do something really cool. Or a living roof.
Or a garden.
Or a garden. We'll talk later. So, yeah, nice native garden. So anyway, I do think we need additional parking. And I do think that we need to actually make some decisions that don't just make it more expensive, that actually provide more parking. In terms of the rest of the township, like Northport and Cold Spring Harbor, there are plenty of places where people would like to go and walk around, but the parking is tricky. I think we need to consider every project that gets built in our township and how it's affecting our traffic and how it's affecting the number of cars that are on our roads. Because you and I, we all know there was this project put together. They did a whole study years ago, right? One of the things that was laid out in that project was that we were going to have issues with our traffic and our parking if we didn't address that. And we didn't address that. So we are in a situation where we've added many people. And we are a hub. Like, people love Huntington. People I grew up with in Nassau County come to Huntington just to come for the Paramount, for the restaurants, for the, you know, people are attracted to this area. Look at the Huntington Fall Festival. It was bananas. There were people from everywhere. We want that. But we also wanna make sure that we're not, first of all, making it, you know, lowering the quality of life for the people that actually live here and pay taxes here in our residence here. But we also wanna make sure that we're not overtaxing our infrastructure and that we're taking into consideration the things that need to be considered as we develop and grow. And I don't want our local businesses to suffer because people won't come in because they can't find parking.
Yeah.
I don't want my nursery school to suffer because people don't wanna sign up over there because they can't find parking. So, you know, that would be my answer.
And I think that's what the... I've been warned. Do you know, don't take any of them minutes? But I think it's a good example of how the community can influence things in local elections by voting and getting involved. Is the fact that in the 2019 housing legislation that the town came up with, they changed it so that you couldn't get variances anymore in the parking. You had, if you were building or renovating a structure and got a zone change, you would have to have the parking on site. So that was great. Anyway, so there you go. There's an example of how the community can change things.
Absolutely.
By voting.
Nobody else really does, by the way. And I know that sounds trite and, you know, superficial. But the people who actually have the most influence over getting things changed are all of you through your vote.
Very good way to put it. Okay, this is the number one, most important topic to everyone that is in our group. And that is, what can the candidates do to bring in more workforce and actually affordable housing for our graduates and seniors? How do you plan to encourage developers to build for this underserved group?
Okay, so you're looking at the mom of three boys in their 20s. And if you don't think I want them to be able to find housing around here to live, then you're crazy because, of course, I do. If that's what they wanna do, I would love for them to have that opportunity. Right now, there are really not many places for people who are just starting out, our young adults, seniors who are looking to downsize, single-income earners. Also, you know, it's another really important group is our adults with special needs who need housing to live independently. And that's a huge, hugely important group of our community who really deserve that opportunity. So I recognize that we need that kind of housing for sure. We're not getting that kind of housing, though. It's a bit of a red herring. So if you're building townhouses on Spring Road that are $1.7 million, I'm sorry, but my 20-something-year-old son is not gonna be able to live there, right? And if you're building, like, right down the street from me, three giant houses, you know, a piece of property right on the corner of 25A, also not affordable to people that we're talking about. So first of all, we need to decide that...
It's like no one's building starter homes.
That nobody's building starter homes.
Not that our citizens afford to buy a house.
And it's not okay. Like, and I understand, there's, so there's, and this is such a complicated issue. And we could talk about this all 45 minutes. I'm gonna try to put it into a nutshell, though. We do need more housing. We need diverse housing. We need housing that young people can afford, that seniors can downsize to. Truthfully, at this point, if I wanted to sell my house and stay in Huntington and downsize, I would not be able to do that because I could sell my house, but there's nothing that I could buy that would be smaller that would allow me to stay. So that's a problem. And we definitely need to keep that in mind because we, this is a community, a diverse community. And we should have people of all ages and we should have people of all economic, socioeconomic, you know, levels and all of that. I have been saying this for years, other people have been saying this for years. We need to reimagine some of our commercial spaces as nice, modern apartments and, and places to live. I think it would be really nice and, and actually, I, I have to give a nod to Cooper Mako, who's running for supervisor. It was his idea to see if it's even possible to focus a building on young people where it would literally be, instead of senior living, it would be for younger people and it would provide things. And I don't know if you can, because I'm not sure that's by law whether you can, but you know, you'd have a gym, you'd have a, you know, whatever it would be that would bring young people in because we do a really good job of educating our kids. We spend a lot of money in our schools. That's why people live on Long Island. If we continue to educate them but not provide a place where they can then come and live, it, it, we're gonna lose all, all of that great education and all those great skills and talents. So I really would like to see us do that. Part of the problem is that developers, and, and they have every right to, they would like to turn a good profit on the, the projects that they're building and they have every right to, like I said. But there needs to be a way to work with them because they can't make the same kind of money on workforce housing that they can make on a 1.7 million dollar townhome, right? So we need to work with them.
Different units within their one, they're stopping me.
Absolutely. Oh, I was wondering if I was saying something wrong. But it's okay because she has a better answer than let her go. And we do, and that's it.
Kind of a plan that's more robust than what we have, that may even be just unique to the town of Huntington. So that would be on you guys' plate to figure it out.
And I think Huntington, truthfully, one of the things I would love to see is Huntington be at the leading edge of all kinds of things, including something like this. And, and I think that if that involves advocating in Albany, then I'll do that. I, you know, I went to Albany as a school board member and advocated for all kinds of things. And it was, you know, often when you sit face to face, you should do it. It's a great thing to do. But if that's what's required to get some help to get this kind of housing built, then maybe that's the direction we need to go in. Because again, you can't expect people, and I have no, I have no beef with the builders and the architects, and, and they have every right, like I said, to, to make a profit. But if we could convince them to work with us as a community to provide some of the things we really need, which is not 1.7 million dollar townhomes, it's, it's affordable apartments for some twenty-somethings. The other thing we need to do though, and, and I wanna make a point of this, is before we go building any additional anything, we need to look at the infrastructure. Okay, I love the Melville project, the way that that looks, that one particular project is lovely.
Oh, you've seen it, the one that they submitted?
You know what? I saw the one submitted because I went to the town and then I actually went to the project that they worked, that they completed over in Central Isla. Steel. Okay, and it's beautiful. It's at the old pilgrim, right?
I don't know, we haven't seen it. That's cool.
Wonderful. They did a... They did a wonderful job of meeting the community's needs. And, and when I went to the presentation of the project that they had planned for Melville, I actually think they did a really nice job. My problem is not with them. My problem is with the town promising that that entire area was going to be looked at as one whole project because that's the way it really should have been done. The community was not saying, "We don't want anything, we don't want anything." They were saying, "We'd like for you to look at it as a project to really build a town center for us and make sure that there's a park." And most importantly, make sure that the environmental impact report was done to the entire area, not segmented. Because when you break it up like that, you're not getting a true picture of how it's going to affect the environment and the traffic and the schools and the first responders. And, and I feel like the town owed it to the community to do it that way. So...
I mean, the Super Study was done for the whole area.
I, I don't, I, I...
It's on the website, right?
I disagree, but I, I could be wrong, but I thought...
Because that's required for the, for the overlay district. They had to do that for the state.
For the state.
Yeah, for the, there is one study, but, you know, it's challenging because, you know, it is an overlay district, so you're not like rezoning the whole area. It's just an option.
Right, and that was what made it tricky. You're right.
Gonna be C6 and this one's gonna stay industrial or not. So that's gonna be different.
And you don't know if this one's gonna be built to look like this. And then this one over here right next to it is gonna be built to look completely different.
If you're on the town board, you get to have a say in that. Every Melville Town Center project is gonna come before you guys.
Is gonna come before us. I wish it had come up in front of the board as one whole project. And that, that I think is what the community was really looking for. And I think that's, and, and, and frankly, that's what the town is missing, okay? So, the town council could do themselves a favor if they would start working in a way that was more transparent. If the process was, was, if people had more faith in the process of what was being planned and what's being developed, they would feel better about the things going up. But they don't. And what I've heard, and this is in every part of the township, and again, on every side of the aisle, I don't care how you're registered, people don't trust the process of how things are being planned and approved and built in Huntington. They feel like they talk outside.
There is a process, but our challenge is getting the information in front of the people so that they can participate in the process.
Well, there's a difference between, right, and, and I, and I always make this...
So I don't know, it's difficult.
I, I make a point of trying to say that there's a difference between allowing people to speak out loud and actually hearing people. Okay, and so all you're allowing is people to get up and speak out loud, and then you don't really hear what they're saying. That's not inspire confidence or trust. And clearly, this community has a lack of trust in the way that this is all handled. I, 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 that I know for sure. I can say that with great confidence. Because, like I said, people all over have expressed that to me. And, and that was what I was up against at the school district. People didn't trust the board of the, of that at that time. And we worked really hard to build community trust so that when we did open that school, people believed we were doing it for the right reasons and with the right guidance and that we had done our homework. That's what I wanna bring to the table.
Very challenging.
It was.
Alright, all the candidates, I know we kinda touched on this too. All the candidates have stated that they're against developing, but also have stated that they're in favor of creating housing for seniors and young adults who can't afford to stay in Huntington. What is your plan to accommodate both interest groups? I believe we touched on it. Are you comfortable with what you've already discussed?
Yes, I am. The other, only other thing I would say is at some point, and I know, you know, the accessory apartments are like a third rail. But if there was some way to let seniors live on the bottom floor of their home and rent, and not every senior, that, that I think is really important. And I think that that does allow seniors to stay put. And so, you know, I think that's a good...
That actually does exist, that uh, when in Chad Lupinoff's uh tenure, they passed that. So that as a way to make it more affordable so seniors could, because before you had a legal accessory apartment, you couldn't live in the apartment.
The bottom.
You couldn't live in the apartment part. You had to live in the main ha- part. So they did add that. So that you could swap. And then that's actually, you know, it's a good plan even for younger people, like if you own a house and...
Right, but for seniors, it's especially important because if you're expecting seniors to rent the apartment downstairs while they go up the steps to the top, that doesn't make any sense to me at all. So just a little common sense. Yeah, that's great.
Alright, so Melville Town Center, we did touch on that also. Now the developers will be submitting their plans for the Melville Town Center, which we have one plan I think so far submitted. How do you plan to keep the hearings for each project fair and above reproach? So this is good with the communication, right?
Yeah, this is just the kind of thing that I'd like to work on while I was at the town. And I, I think that we can see the way other townships, and, and I'm not a big believer in reinventing the wheel. So, but I am a big believer. Like, I, I had a friend when I was on the school board who was on the South Huntington School Board. And when I had a question about how things were handled by them, or if I thought our process was odd, or I was looking for a new way to do things, I would consult other school board members from other school districts. I think Huntington could, used to do some of the same thing. And, and I think that that, you know, would be helpful in this instance.
Yeah, very good. Okay. Residents frequently express frustration with the responsiveness of the town, particularly regarding illegal housing.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about.
What specific changes would you implement to make the town more proactive, efficient, and effective in addressing violations?
Okay, I love this question because there are so many excellent questions, Dana. Great question. Because, you know, a lot of times you learn that it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, right? And so what happens is you get a slap on the wrist at the end, even though you're doing something that you knew was not okay. And in fact, this happened right at that uh building. I told you, they're building three houses around the corner from me. It was specifically laid out in writing that they should not remove two very mature holly trees from the back of property. Okay, that was all that was asked. They were gonna clear the rest of it, just leave the two holly trees. Well, they cut them down. Okay, and then when they were confronted on it, they said, "Oh, oh yeah, we cut them down, but we'll plant two new holly trees." Well, unless you're going to a plant nursery that's run by God, you are not finding two mature-growth holly trees the size of these two that you're gonna plant in that spot, okay? And, and so, and again, but what did they get? They got a slap on the wrist. So I think that if you really wanna get people, I, I hate to say it, many people are gonna do the right thing just because they're gonna do the right thing. They're like us. They wanna do the right thing. So they're gonna follow the rules even if they're not, you know, gonna get in trouble for it. The other people think that this is the cost of doing business, right? So I think we need to make the cost of doing business a little higher if you're gonna cheat. I think if you're gonna break the rules, I am all for making the fines of those kinds of violations larger. In fact, I know at the last town board meeting, they just did something like that. Teresa Mori just sponsored something where they were increasing fines for people who had, I, I forget exactly what it was about, but it was, anyway. I, I'm, I'm all for that. I, I think people, you know, we all pay a lot in taxes here and it's not fa- I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a nursery school director. I spend three-quarters of my days talking about what's fair. I always say, I practically have a master's degree in fairness. So I really think fair is fair. And we should make sure that people who are violating are actually, you know, paying for their violation.
Alright, this one is interesting, Dana. Is this you too? How would you take advantage of technology and new communication strategies to increase transparency in town government and make it easier for busy residents to stay informed and participate in the decision-making process? I like this one. We have 10 minutes left.
Okay, so I'm gonna be really quick with all the rest of my answers. Okay, so, full disclosure, I'm a nursery school director. Technology. I, I'm great on my computer and I'm a really good learner, but technology is not something that comes into my daily life. So I would definitely consult with people to find out the best way to bring more transparency and more um, you know, ability to interact and stay informed and participate. But I would have to consult like my twenty-something-year-old son. You know something? We need more young people's input, truthfully. And I'm not just trying to spin the question, although it looks like I am. But the truth is, they, even the jobs that they are going for today, it, it are not jobs I knew even, that even existed when I was going to college. So there's a lot, it's hard to know what you don't know, right? You don't know what you don't know. But I do know how to do my homework and how to find resources, and I'm tireless about that kind of thing. So if I don't have the answer, I would find somebody who does.
Alright, great. Tough times for local businesses. We all recognize that the economy, as well as competition from the digital world, has been tough on local mom and pop businesses. What would you do to help them through these tough times?
Every possible thing. So you're looking at the daughter of a man who started a small business when I was a, a child. I was maybe two. He had three young children. He left, um, he, at that point, was working for, I think, Union Carbide and started his very own small business here on Long Island. The business is still around today. In fact, one of my sons works for my dad's business. I will. So it's Jekeda Sales, J-E-K-E-D-A, sales. It's a sales company. Most people are not. It's, you know, they import uh rolled plastics and then turn it into things like
Oh, cool.
Uh, mattress covers and ball covering and car seats and everything. But the important thing that you should know about it is that my dad showed up every day, whether he was sick or not. It was his small business. He never missed a day. He took pride in that business. He named it after his children. J E's for Jen, K E's for Ken, D A's for David. Jekeda. That's where the name comes from. And it's a really important family business. And so small family businesses are really important to me. And I would be a great ally for you because I get it. And also, one of the things that I really have to offer is that I plan on having an open door policy in office hours, like every afternoon. I work at one end of town and then hopefully I get this job at the other end of town and I plan on just going from one to the other place. So when you need me, I will be accessible. And if you need me to lobby for something that is reasonable and something I can help you with, then I'm going to.
That's awesome. Alright, we only have a few minutes. We have four more questions. So why don't you pick your favorite?
Okay, so... Open space and infrastructure. And because, again, you're looking at somebody who's a very environmentally conscious person, and I have been doing a lot of homework on our aquifers and on sewage treatment plants. And in fact, I sat down with Sarah Maylin. Some of you may know. She's a professor who's an expert at that. She was the person that was at that meeting that the um Hark sponsored about. So it's really important to me that we find ways, proactive ways, like now, to protect our water. I don't want our beaches closing because our water is contaminated because of algae blooms. But I also don't want our aquifers to become so depleted that we get saltwater intrusion and then it's too late. So we need, one of the things I'd really like to discuss and, and do is, for projects like the Melville Corridor, I think there should be um, I think there, there should be a requirement that any projects right now put up in Huntington require, provide some kind of um water treatment. So, and, and it doesn't just have to be a sewage treatment plant. Although if you put in a sewage treatment plant, I think that they should all, at this point in Huntington, be required to be the kind of sewage treatment plant that treats the water to the point where it can be reused to water green spaces. Not to make it potable. I'm not making anybody drink our sewage water. But you can treat that water to the point where you could use it to water golf courses and park property. When you, so the sewage treatment plants we have right now in Huntington, and I may end up speaking about this for the last 10 minutes.
Did you see the new, they redid it, right? Didn't they do a renovation or an upgrade?
Renovation and it...
I haven't seen it.
So basically, what happens is, I think every sewage treatment plant we have in Huntington, and I could be wrong, just so you know, but I'm almost positive, only treats the water to the point where it removes the solid waste and then the water gets dumped back out into the ocean. When you do that, that means you're taking water from our aquifers, you're treating it to some extent, and then you're putting it in the ocean, which means that you deplete the aquifers when you do that. If we could require the sewage treatment plants to treat the water to the point where it could be reused, when it got watered onto the golf courses and green spaces, it would go back into our aquifers and it would...
Is there technology out there that does that?
A hundred percent. They're doing it out east all the time right now.
So you would treat the water instead of discharging the treated water into the waterways, where you put it in, what, a container?
You would water, yeah, well...
But how do you get the water to that?
So it's all part of the sewage treatment plant. And of course, the property that you're watering would have to be close by. But if you're talking about somewhere like Melville, and now you're gonna have green spaces in their parks, or maybe you're gonna have, you know...
Every project from Melville Town Center has to have green spaces.
Absolutely. So out east, it's not, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. They're doing this out east. In Nassau County, where I grew up on sewers, and I have four minutes, so I'm gonna be really quick. Uh, when I was born, there were sewers out in East Wilson and Out. A while ago. So, but what, and I always thought that was the greatest thing. And then I moved here and I'm like, how are we still on, you know, how is it that we're still on septic? But what I've learned is that the rea- the reason that Nassau County is having trouble with their drinking water is that they've depleted our aquifers because of their sewage treatment plants. And now they do have saltwater intrusion in places. So we either need sewage treatment plants that completely treat the water or we need to give our um residents some incentive to put in these updated and modernized septic systems that complete. At this point, for some of us, those are the best environmental answer to our water problems. Would be these really upgraded, modernized um septic tanks that then treat the water in a way that, you know, then when it goes back into the aquifers, it's okay again.
That's awesome.
So, and I'll just finish by saying that this is all really important to me because, first of all, I, I don't, we all live on Long Island because it's beautiful here. We love our beaches. We have the best beaches and waters. Let's not see that slip away while we stand here and do nothing. And also, you're looking at a person who's an avid gardener. As you know, I'm trying to replace a lot of the plants in my yard with native plants. I have compost pile, I have backyard chickens. My husband's a beekeeper. Yeah, yep, yeah. And so I, I don't just talk the talk, I actually walk the walk.
Very good. Um, thank you for talking to us today, Jen.
Oh my gosh, this was a pleasure.
Know you, right? We've upgraded. Thank you to Laura Palacios.
Thank you, Laura.
American financial planners. Uh, we're in her office. I'll write it down for the next one. Don't watch it and don't tell her. It's in the text of the post. Um, thank you guys so much. And election day is November 4th. Early voting starts October 25th.
Thank you. I was like...
To November 2nd. And that would be availability to vote during the week, doing whatever at Dixiel's Fire Department.
It's South Huntington. South Huntington Public Library. I'm not, no, sorry, sorry. Huntington Station, right.
Um, so yeah, definitely get out. And yes, 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 local elections are the most important. They have the biggest impact on your daily life, your family's future, and our community's future as a whole. Thanks, guys. See you in a little while.
Thank you.